I've been wrong. I was like, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty.
Are you?
I think so too.
Well, it's all her.
All right, thank you.
We'll go ahead and get started this evening with the City of Centerton Board of Zoning adjustments February 6, 2024 with a roll call.
Brandon Swoboda. Tony Davis. Ben Lewis. John Sessom. Jerry Harris. Craig Langford. Devin Murphy. Joey Engel. Jeff Safer.
Here. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our meeting on 1/16 of 2024.
Joey, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from 1/16.
Sean, a second.
Motion is second. Is anyone opposed? Our next meeting will be as needed, and then I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn the BZA.
I'll give you a second.
Motion to adjourn the BZA. Is anyone opposed? All right. Next, I'd like to call to order the City of Centerton Planning Commission from February 6, 2024 with a roll call.
Brandon Swoboda. Tony Davis. Ben Lewis. John Sessom. Jerry Harris. Craig Langford. Devin Murphy. Joey Engel. Jeff Safer.
Here. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the planning minutes from 1/16 of 2024.
This is Joey. I'll make a motion to approve these minutes too, from 1/16, 24 of the last planning commission meeting.
Sean, I'll second those two.
Motion and a second. Is anyone opposed? All right, no admin approvals, no business, under new business this evening. We do have two public hearings on the agenda. The first public hearing is for rezone 2311 Baldwin. Rezone from R3 single family to C1. The address is 531 North Main Street. It is point eight two. And the applicant is the, is the applicant here to give us an overview of what you're requesting? Y'all just. Any attention on what you guys are trying to do? I need your name first, just for the record, things like that.
One Baldwin. We are just going to go from residential to C1 for the purpose of selling the property. We no longer live in Centerton. We lived here for a long time, but we moved off about 18 years ago. And we're too old to maintain the property up here and do a justice for Centerton. So we would want to sell the property.
Thank you. All right, Kayla, right?
Yes.
You want to give us a staff overview?
Yeah, so this parcel is located directly north of the Centerton Utilities office on North Main Street and a little bit south at the Veterans Park. There is one existing structure on the parcel, and the owner's intent is to sell the property after rezoning. The reflected zoning is C1, which is our central business district. And that's intended for intensive commercial uses, including retail stores, banks, offices and the like. It's the retail core of the city, and due to the permanency of the existing structures and the nature of this district, structures may object to the planning commission's approval, be built to the front and in most cases, sides property lines. So that's the big difference between. So that's the big difference between C one and C three. Um all of the uses between C one and C three are exactly the same. That's mostly the difference. Um so it's located on Main Street, which is designated as a minor arterial boulevard with ninety feet right of way on their master street plan. Um minor arterioles support major roadways and after often intersect with the major arterial such as SIBA. Um which serve as the main spine within the community. The typical three sections for minor interials reels include ten foot trails on both sides. For utilities, Centerton Water is available along North Main Street, and then there's a sanitary sewer line running through the middle of this property north south. So on the adopted land use plan, this area is designated for medium high density residential, and it's also included within node one of our growth accommodation plan. Which states that this area includes a new downtown center area, which should prioritize a higher density of residential infill development using compatible design standards. Just supporting downtown center businesses as the core of the city of the city, the development area will help establish and grow the commercial use city desires. And um the proposed innovation center is located just directly, not directly, but south of this parcel. Um and I've included a map of where that innovation district is as well as there's a little circle. Where where this parcel is in node one, so it's right on the edge. Um so based on the goals of our current comprehensive plan in this area, the rezoning request for C one isn't consistent. However, as you guys know, we're looking at. The Indian's plan and the industry plans and considering regenerating some areas, and this course were one of the ones. We're considering have C one go all the way up to the corner where the Palmeroy Apartments are. This is one of two parcels along this stretch that's single family, so it makes more sense for it to be commercial this whole stretch. As for surrounding zoning and uses, this parcel is directly adjacent to the new Centerton Utilities Office, which is zone C one. Directly south of that is the cemetery. Um to the north, separated by one parcel, which is the other R three SF parcel, um is Veterans Park. And then north of Veterans Park is the Palmeroy Place Apartments. To the east is CNN at Cooper Farm subdivision, which is zone C two, and then to the west is zone R three D, but it hasn't been developed yet. Um so based on the surrounding zonings and existing uses, the reason request for C one is compatible. I've listed a few of our comprehensive goal. Comprehensive plan goals and whether they align or not with this. Um reason request for your eyes is just to read through, and then we have the reason requests, the land use map, and then the land use map with. Um what's currently there. Happy to answer any questions.
To restate what you said earlier, the difference between C one, C three is basically is that that building to the and the C one allows building to the front.
Yeah, with approval from you guys. Um and they met all of their public notices. We didn't receive any comments from the public.
Make sure I understand this. So you stated that just to the south is the Centerton Utility, and that's currently zone C one that's adjoining it to the south.
That whole purple piece right below it. And then right under it where it's technically R three SF, but it's actually the cemetery. It's right on the other side.
Any other questions or comments before we open up to the public? I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Not a motion of public hearing for rebound twenty three eleven.
Give me a second.
Motion and a second to open the public hearing. We are now open to uh anyone from the public that wishes to speak, have any questions or comments? Uh in regards to the rezone twenty three eleven, uh again, it's a five thirty one North Main Street, Main Street uh from R three single family to C one. If you have any questions, comments, we'd ask that you come to the podium, state your name and any question or comments you might have. Second call for anyone that wishes to speak. Third and final call.
This has been on motion to close the public hearing.
Tony, a second.
Motion to close the public hearing. Is anyone opposed? Let's go through the uh questions that we have to consider. Uh the first one. Uh is the rezoning consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, including the adopted land use plan? Not uh why? And as as Caleb pointed out with today's plan, um technically it is not um. Uh consistent, but with the future that we've been talking about and that we've started a little bit of work on, um I do think that it would be uh consistent. Uh with that, uh and certainly open any comments or or anything discussion in regards to that, or does anybody disagree with that? Is the proposed rezoning compatible with the surrounding area and zones? Um as it was pointed out, it is adjacent to a commercial property today, uh one for the for the city. Um and so. I do think that it would be uh compatible um with the surrounding area. Uh does anybody disagree with that or have any comments? Would all the permitted uses in the new zone be compatible in this location uh and the surrounding areas? And I do believe that all of the permitted uses uh would would be uh compatible. Um does anybody disagree with that or have any comments? Would the rezoning provide a benefit to this landowner but not be considered for similar properties in this area? And I do not believe that it provides a benefit uh just to this landowner. We do the same consideration for uh other surrounding properties. Does anybody disagree with that or have any comments? And if the public is opposed, why? And there were no uh open uh public comments this evening, uh nor did uh the staff receive any. Any additional questions or comments from any of the commissioners before we consider the rezone? If not, then I would entertain a motion for the rezone uh twenty three eleven, the Baldwin uh property from R three uh single family to C one at five thirty one North Main Street.
Greg, I'll make a motion to approve rezone twenty three dash eleven Baldwin, rezone R three single family to C one.
John, a second. Motion uh in a second, uh Samantha, if you'll do a roll call for me, please.
Brandon Swoboda.
Yes.
Tony Davis.
Yes.
Ben Lewis. John Sessoms.
Yes.
Jerry Harris.
Yes.
Craig Langford.
Yes.
Devin Murphy.
Yes.
Joey Engel. Jeff Safer.
Yes.
For clarification, that's to recommend approval to the city council, not to approve it.
Thank you, guys. Good luck. Alright, next on the agenda this evening is a uh planned unit development twenty three zero five. Uh Womack mixed use. This is at the southwest corner uh of Womack Road and East Centerton Boulevard. It is zoned C two. It is nine point one six acres, uh two hundred and fifty six dwelling units. Uh the owner is K E P. Uh is the applicant or someone here to give us an overview?
Good evening. I'm Chris McUnus with McClellan Consulting in years. Some of you may remember I came through a little over a year ago with the PED for this property. Um and this is the same owner, same developer. We're just asking to switch up some things here tonight. So if you remember anything about it prior to PZ, it had two big buildings that were really. And unfortunately, uniqueness comes with a hefty cost tag, so developers just kind of stepping back after we went through a pretty extensive pricing exercise. Just seeing how we can get this thing in budget so that we should build. So that's what we're presenting to you tonight. So. Basically, the program elements, what we presented before are all the same. Um we kind of just walked through the site plan real quick. One of those elements was to have commercial space, so we've got. Two buildings that anchor both the northeast and the northwest corners of the site. Those will be mixed use buildings, so the ground level is all commercial. We got apartments on top. Zoom back out there.
For what you asked for.
Try.
I never know.
So in the uh the center of the site, we've got an amenity building, which we'll uh see you in a second. There we go.
Sorry.
The pink building there is the amenity space, so that'll be clubhouse and pool. And then the remainder of those buildings in more tan color, those are just going to be your residential units there. So those are all three stories with exception to the L shaped building. Two and the four on it right there. That is a four story building. Also, the one at the corner on the northeast corner is a four story building as well. So there's also amenities throughout the site. There's a big green open space there on the southwest side. We got pickleball courts on the west side. There's a trail that encompasses the development. That kind of kind of sums it up. So like I said, a lot of these same elements that we presented previously are in this one, but the ratios have changed. And if we could maybe jump over to, I think it was page nine.
Doesn't have the whole plan.
So and I don't know if those are in your package or not, but there was a page nine there, and it basically was an exhibit that just kind of outlined what we presented previously to what we're showing today. So like I said. So we understood that the commercial aspect of this was very important to the city. So what we've done is we've actually added. We've almost added over ten thousand square feet, so over double what we previously showed. The dwelling units themselves, the density has dropped, and again, that was just something that we're looking at to get it more portable, so that density is lower. With that, the parking count has come down, but the ratio has improved, so we're better parked there. Um the final thing I think we're noting there is the green space. There's substantially more green space with us as well. And part of that is just the program for this development. They want it to be, you know, outdoor focused. We've moved some of those amenities outside. There's also been some code changes over the last year or two that has bumped that up, but we are exceeding what those those requirements are. Also on this page, just a quick exhibit, just showing some of our parking vehicles in the commercial area. Uh when you compare the two, a lot more parking around the commercial space than there was previously in the prior.
Did that access to one oh two change?
No, uh well, to the one oh two, yes, that that did change. So previously, what we were showing. Fire access and the mobile site, but now there is a driveway there. Um we're still working with the adjacent property owner to try to get access through their property, which would be preferred. But we want to make sure that we do have access on on one two as well.
Chris, on these buildings, um when I think mixed use and something that looks like this, I'm thinking like ground floor, commercial, residential above. I see we have it broken out with the different colors right there on the top corner, top right corner. Um. So the only. Commercial you have is set up like that, right?
Yeah, so the commercial building is set up like that, where you'll have all the storefronts for that number one and number four, the buildings that will have that.
But.
Building, there's a bunch of outdoor space, so they can use that for dining space, event space, and that's all just kind of shared.
And the blues are just strictly residential.
Strictly residential, yeah.
What's the thought on four? To me, it seems like it's just kind of floating out there in the corner.
Yeah, and I think it's just kind of a limitation of the the available space we had and just it it is a smaller building. Um and the thought there was to kind of have that as some kind of business that could be next to this pickleball courts like. A shoe shop or something like that where they could kind of play hand in hand. So it is a little bit different programming than the others.
That makes sense.
You said you upped the commercial space by ten thousand, right?
What's the total uh is it up here?
So the total commercial space now is seventeen thousand nine hundred square feet.
Got you.
Seventy two hundred square feet previously.
Cool, yeah, it's right here in front of me. Sorry, I didn't see the charts. It's nice.
It's in there. It's in there.
And then we talked about, if I'm not mistaken, we talked about the your road on the eastern side and some upgrades. It looks like you're showing.
Yeah, so we'll do right away uh dedication through later. We also discussed last time that we probably will have that out and another lane there, so we're all all agreeable to that.
We'll have a. Right lane, middle left turn.
Yes.
Okay.
As as you recall, recall last time too, we discussed the signal at that intersection.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that.
Thinking.
Did that get approved?
It's it's still on the table. I spoke with R dot about it, and I don't have a a definite answer, so I think that's just some more. Let's get staff and figure it out exactly. That's something that is desired, and we've got to take that back to the state office to get that approved.
Have you done any traffic studies?
Yeah, we did a traffic study as part of the initial. Uh we just recycled that because densities are lower. Basically, what that said was that there is a deficiency at that intersection currently, but this development is not contributing to that problem.
Making it.
I reviewed that though, and it'll have to have a signal. Based on what they said before during peak rush hour, um someone is waiting to turn off of Womack onto one oh two for twenty minutes during your peak hour. With this development, they'll have a car sitting there waiting to turn left for fifty seven minutes without a signal. So it's already at an E.
He's trying to left off of Womack?
Yeah, on Womack waiting to turn onto one oh two. Those were the projected numbers from their report, so.
That's gonna turn into.
E, so they're like, it's. It's not their fault.
Didn't E the worst? Is that right?
Or F. Get work out. So I mean, it's. Fifty seven minutes you'd have a car sitting there.
Those developments to the south, right?
So you're.
Labor is down there.
Tripling it. The wait time we were twenty seven hour at an hour, it's the number of vehicles, the wait time, the thing wouldn't change. So yes, it will need an intersect or a signal there.
And I think if that's something we can work out, the the developer would like that and is agreeable to pay their fair share of that. It's just getting the argument, taking it to R dot and seeing what we can do with it.
And unfortunately, R dot, you have to build it and then consider it after the fact.
Yeah, it's I mean, it's it's not not an easy process, as you know. So I think last time what we thought that is that would kind of be picked up and scaled process and work. As an option for tonight, I think that would be.
Nothing will get.
Destruction document side of it.
You would be able to firm down what it is right now, so.
Why are you talking to him? Are they gonna let you put street trees in the right way?
Probably not.
I think those street trees are outside of the right.
Are they?
No, they're they gotta be within that. Well, that's a major.
Yeah.
I got you. I got you.
Pretty on paper.
You know, we we get that a lot, and then, you know, they go to build it, and they're like, oh, we can't put this there, and we don't have room inside to put.
Best effort we can to get trees. I mean, we want the trees. We want this to look nice. Um but. This is conceptual at this point, as you guys know, the Savannah Cypress.
It looks like you've gained almost an acre of green space.
Yep.
Yeah, so with our new PED requirements, because their density is more than fifty percent increase from what would be allowed in here, they have to give thirty seven point five percent green space.
Fifty percent of the fifty percent if I recall.
Yeah.
Might have something else and.
Chris, where's you?
It's gonna do too much.
But your density, you changed the levels, right?
So I think in this concept, we're showing it over by those pickleball courts on the west side. But as we've studied this more, we'll probably have two different systems, so there will be one over there and one that's over uh.
Like eighteen area.
Just east of that other L tan building right there. So we're gonna work and split it up just just covers an issue there, go back to our dot system, so.
I mean, I'm assuming it's gonna be a normal. Detention.
Yeah, underground detention.
Underground. Okay, cool. More green space.
Yep.
Cool. I think it looks good.
Any additional questions to Chris before we have a staff overview?
Um one, the the entrance off of Womack. With all the, they were yeah, right there, with all those cars. Trying to back.
Stacked up.
Yes, I'm a little concerned, but.
You know, and that's something I've noticed, and we're actually not meeting what the the requirement for the city is, and I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, but I. We did pick up on that since this was developed. We'll probably. All's right there, but there's there's room to gain those elsewhere in the site.
Wonder if you could do some parallel parking instead of uh. Pull in.
You know, initially we looked at that, but what we changed is we were trying to get more parking by the commercial. So we we shifted things around a little bit initially.
Angle, or maybe there's some other way that's a little more friendly than just a back out.
Yeah, there there could be. We have not explored angle.
What were you saying? Didn't meet the internal stacking?
Yeah, I think there was from the right away, and now and I don't know if you know what it is off top of your head, but it's.
Off top of my head.
Something fee, fee, and we're we're not showing that right now. So basically, you could get one car in there.
Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, just the concern about people coming in and just cars backing out. Twenty five feet is probably whatever the distance is, is probably there for that very reason.
Kayla, you want to give us a staff overview?
I'm gonna hit the finer points in life since we got a pretty good overview. So this development will include two hundred and fifty six residential units and seventeen thousand nine hundred square foot of commercial space. That's split up between seven multifamily buildings, two buildings that contain both multifamily and commercial and one amenity slash leasing office. For those of you counting, that's ten buildings total. Um the commercial will be located on the ground floors of building one and four, which are what you. Um, the commercial will be located on the ground floors of building one and four, which are what you would call your anchor points. Your two corners of the development, one highway, one oh two. The property has access to Centerton Water along highway one oh two and Centerton Sewer along Womack. There's no FEMA designated flood plan on this parcel or wetlands. Um, the property is directly adjacent to highway commercial C two on the east, west and north and medium high density. In complete sentence, stone lay, um, and medium high density are located a little bit to the west. The current zoning designation of highway commercial was determined to be the best designation for this mixed use development. It's the most intensive use and allows mixed uses as a conditional use. Um, as discussed, this had a P U D previously approved. Um, this P U D is completely separate. It's not an amendment to the old one. This is a whole new one. Um, the design team has since changed, so they're requesting a full new P U D. Um, we already went through, this is C two. Um, it's located along highway one oh two, which is a major arterial. It's already been widened there. So all of the right of way needed is already. Womack is a major plus that would be planned right away. Um, and they will have to dedicate some additional right of way on Womack. Twenty-five feet. Um, and then they'll have to also build a ten foot sidewalk. To match the cross section. So they'll have one access off of Centerton Boulevard and one off of Womack. We're hoping that they can also get a shared access. Through Sherwin-Williams, Centerton Retail Development. It falls like right between those two. So I'm not sure exactly which one that falls on. I think it's Sherwin-Williams though. Development will include three point three seven acres of open space. Uh, and amenities, which includes a pool, pickleball courts, another public pickleball court. Union courtyards, rooms and gathering spaces, fireplaces, event spaces, walking paths, off the landscaping. Um, street trees, landscaping and screening buffers are included in the P U D concept. So, the density for this proposed is twenty-eight point five units per acre, which is more than a fifty percent increase. In density compared to R four M F. Compared it to that zoning because C two doesn't really have a density requirement. So R four M F was the closest one to compare to. Um, I included a snippet from the comprehensive plan about the eastern edge and highlighted an important. Section I thought where it says the corridor commercial. Um, uses support multifamily and mixed uses residential directly adjacent to it. So in this area, the mixed use is a good spot for it. The accessory buildings, there's one pool house and a pavilion proposed on here. Um, but any other accessory buildings would often need the underlying zoning district. Um, for the open space, they are meeting that thirty-seven point five percent open space to be. Designated as common open space. They're proposing underground detention. So, there's no worry about that. The site is largely flat. So we don't have to worry about the fifteen percent so requirement. You guys see all the beautiful landscaping. They will have to install a fence along the south because that's where the R three S F is. I would like to note that there's a fifty foot. Um, electrical easement along the backside of this property. So there is a pretty good buffer between these buildings and. Those houses. And there's also gonna be a ten foot landscape buffer with. Meandering trail and trees. Uh, but the setback on that back is gonna have to be at least fifty. Beneath that. Um, they are sticking with the rest of the normal setback requirements. Um, for the zoning, it's somewhere in my report. The rear setback is fifty, which exceeds the, the zoning. From its fifty, the side and street side are both ten. So they need all of those setbacks. They'll have a six foot privacy fence for screening. This site does have two trash compactors. Um, instead of dumpsters, there's one located on the west side and that will have to follow our screening requirement for dumpster enclosures. Um, and then the other one is located inside building one. So they have their own trash compactor. So we don't have to worry about them tote and trash all the way across the site to put it away. So. Good for that. We got here. One topic, um, and I made sure Anthony was here or I asked him to be here for the topic about the street light. Um, because the intersection is already failing without this development, staff didn't feel that it would be fair to necessarily ask this developer to. Bear the full burden of having to put this, the street light in or the signal in, especially because Walgreens already developed, it's developed. Like a lot of things on this intersection have already developed. Um, so I think it's worth having the conversation of seeing if the city can cost share or if more developments come in, if they can pitch in too. So that this developer isn't getting the end of it. Um, the other thing we wanted to talk about was the parking. Um, so some basic math and you guys can correct me if my math is wrong. Um, so based on the, the table inside the P U D code. Um, for the residential, it's one point five parking spaces. Per unit and they have two hundred and fifty-six units. So they would need three hundred eighty-four units for their residential alone. Plus any visitor parking spaces. And then for the commercial. It's two hundred to three hundred square foot per space depending on the use. So that's sixty to ninety parking spaces. Which comes to a total of four hundred and forty-four to four hundred and seventy-four spaces for both uses. Um, the applicant's requested ratio is listed in there. Um, they wanna do one point three three parking spaces per dwelling unit, which is three hundred. And then the remaining sixty proposed spaces would be shared between residential. Which is about four hundred. Our concern isn't exactly the number of parking, just the, the way that it's distributed. A lot of the parking on the west side and the rear sides of this development are gonna be heavily underutilized because they're pretty far away from. A lot of stuff, especially the commercial. Um, point where there's ten thousand, over ten thousand square foot of commercial. Um, I'm not quite sure that there's enough parking around that building essentially, because that's where the most units and the most commercial are. Stack between those two four-story buildings. I don't know if you guys wanna take a look at that and give me your opinions. Um, there are two signs. One at the entrance.
Where's the trash? Actor served for the commercial. I didn't see it listed.
So, the one for building one is inside building one. Other one is marked as number twenty-one.
Saw that. Does it call it out that it's inside?
I'm not, I don't think it calls it out.
You could probably argue parking all night. As I see developments around, I see a lot of people walking anymore. I mean, we're trying to get connectivity with bike and some other things, so. I'm not as concerned. Um, I guess at the end of the day, the commercial people can honestly. Hey, can you put designated signs up or something like that? Maybe if we wanted it to be used a little bit different, but I don't think that's for us to decide. It's going out my opinion. Um, I, I think, um. Yeah, that's, that's.
And I, I'm with you too. I think the. I think the layout like leaves itself pretty well to just as simple two-way traffic. Um, but on the flip side, it seems pretty out, outdoor oriented. Um, there's plenty of trails everywhere. I don't see anywhere where you're going to be. Forced to, you know, cross a lot of traffic. I think maybe we could do a. Pedestrian crossing from the south and maybe a couple from the south just to get across. Like somewhere in there. Um, and that might help people get up and get around if they have to park that far back to get to the commercial, but. I agree with you as far as the. The location, I don't think. I think it starts making the site really. Kind of confusing and to me, this is, this blends it all together and the parking flows. Yeah, you might have to park over here and go. But I think if you start designating a huge parking lot somewhere, I think that kind of takes away. But as far as the number, they, the, the overall number works, right? You're just worried about distribution. And I agree with you.
It, it depends what commercial goes in there too. I mean, and, and. They're gonna reach out to customers car, aren't we, aren't able to park and that's something they'd have.
I'll just add two for the parking. This is a collaboration between two developers that have pretty extensive projects all over the country. Um, and I've got Andy Smith here. One of them has an in-house design group. And so he's the one that's put together a lot of these graphics you're looking at. He's pretty extensively studied this. And I mean, they've got plenty of models and what has served for them on these developments and. Basically, this is what's worse one of the past.
Just, just looking at this, one more thing as far as traffic goes. Um, is there a reason we don't have another stub on the Womack on the south side kind of lining up with that? Is that a drive? Yeah, it's just a driveway, I think. Coming off of your little bump out area. And I'm just thinking out loud, do you think that would help circulation through the site?
What are you talking about, Jerry?
The very southern, southeast, uh, yeah, right there.
And I've considered that as well too.
Getting it to be perpendicular to.
Speak, he lost his voice. It came all the way from. And now he can't talk, so.
Didn't walk the last time I was here. Now I can't speak. I think my wife likes it that I can't speak. We actually had looked at that and we felt like those were. Two really very close together entrances and, um. We had worked with staff with a couple of iterations of this plan. And the suggestion was to cut, we had the, um. The entrance out, out on one or two is to cut that back to one on the backside. And we could punch it through if, if y'all wanted to. I just don't know that the site really benefits that much from it. I think the commercial. It fits more from. That being.
Honestly, I, I see people, if that were connected, uh, cutting over to try to get to one oh two and avoid the light.
Yeah, but they can do that up here too, you know?
It's just more work.
One of it was a crazier idea, just throwing. Throwing things out. I don't have very many. What if, again, just talking through the parking situation and, uh, entrance and exit now, looking a lot, right? What if it was a one-way in and then the way out was on the south side? Just throwing it out there. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know if it would make more people upset or not and y'all certainly understand it.
We, we kind of were seeing that entrance on the side to be merely for the commercial. And so we wanted that to be more full service. Whereas the front entrance was more residential. In nature. I mean, we, we could study whatever y'all asked us to. I, I just feel like it's a better surface.
I don't, I don't know that it changes our decision this evening because there's a, I mean, it's still gonna be a hard surface. And it's gonna either be drive and parking or vice versa. And so I don't think it changes the overall. Nature of the plan. I think we're talking about connectivity and the possibility. Vehicles, which is what we wanna do.
There's one more thought is that, and this occurred to me because we've had this with a couple of other of our developments. Is with us trying to get that connection to the west. If we can make a connection there at the bottom, it creates a very straight shot through our back parking lot. You know, we, we do want this very walkable. That is, it is, it is, you're gonna want people to. Heading back into that back entrance and racing across the back of the property.
I'm also wondering, are, are dots gonna let you have a turn out on one oh two with that signal so close?
Yeah, they, they didn't mind it.
It's on a hill too.
That's a lot of the stuff that has to go in our next level of design.
Yeah, like Jess said, I don't think it's a make or break decision. We're just kind of talking through it. We've seen great ones. We've seen bad ones and we just don't want to.
You know, we, we want a, a good. Good traffic flow off of that. And I just don't want to create a bad, an unintended consequences across the back of the property. Um, and once again, a- as you say. We, we have learned with these mixed use developments, the mix of the commercial. Is very important as to what you have in these commercial buildings. And we are opening those pickleball courts up to public. So that's another reason to have. Some working on that end is pickleball. Really people. It baffles me, but. I used to wrestle in high school. People thought I was weird. So, um. Think it's a good distribution as she says, we very much travel communities.
One thing that staff had, had brought up is shifting those two buildings to the south. And then moving the parking where it'd be available. More to share with the, um, commercial.
We'd love to do that, but there's that easement.
Oh, because you're using that utility easement for your parking.
Is that Carol?
You know, I don't remember. I'd assume it is. Or yeah, it might be slip because we're dealing with adjacent property.
Only we did study that. We actually. By shifting everything south.
I, I mean, where are their, where's their infrastructure? So I was gonna ask if they were okay with it, but really that just gets them better access to the infrastructure. So I don't know why they wouldn't be okay with it.
Actually, while we're on this point, I did receive two comments from the public there in. This packet. I don't know that they got printed off. They came in. Yesterday, um. When we get to the public hearing, they have some concerns about privacy and how tall the buildings are gonna be. So, just wanted to mention it.
All right. I think we should go ahead and open it up to. Uh, so this time I'd entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Is Joey, I'll make a motion up in the public hearing for P U D twenty-three oh five.
Greg, I'll second. Motion in a second. Is anyone opposed? We are now open to the public. Uh, if anyone wishes to speak, uh, on the planned unit development twenty-three zero five for the Womack mixed use. We'd ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address, and then any questions, comments, or concerns you might have.
Good evening. I'm Wayne Kagle. Live at a. Seven eighty-one Dixon Street. So I'm just south of building number nine there in the southeast corner. And overall, talking with some neighbors, you know, we're excited about it and businesses that it'll bring and all. Did have a, a concern about the privacy in our backyards that these three-story buildings could see, you know, everything, watch our kids play. Um, so I noticed there's that landscape buffer to the south and trees there. If we could get thirty-foot trees, I think that would, would give enough privacy to kind of hide things from the backyard.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak and then we'll. Third call for anyone from the audience that wishes to speak or have any comments?
Diana Allen, two zero one Blake, Centerton. I just have a question because I. Uh, this is the first time I've seen this and so I'm having trouble orienting myself. But on the top of the picture, that's. Centerton Boulevard, right?
Correct.
Right in the middle, where it kind of fans out, that's the entrance in.
There's multiple, yes, so that's one entrance and exit.
So is that the only word says twenty?
Twenty-two, twenty-two and twenty-three, I think it is. Those, that's one entrance and exit. The second entrance and exit is on the, uh, is on Womack. Which that's what our discussion was, is what does that really look like? Um, and is there a better way to flow traffic and things like that? We don't have to solve that tonight, but. That was part of our discussion earlier. So there would be two entrances and exits. And then the traffic study that was referenced is. Uh, in reference to Womack so that anybody that, that's where we would want more people to possibly.
And that would be where you planned the, the stoplight.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Just. Well, this isn't public, but I want to point it out to, to everybody, um. Let me just see it. I think we had a, in the rear, we had an eight-foot fence. Um, and the landscaping back there. So it was taller than the typical six foot. Um, I don't, let's see here, it says twenty. I don't know if it's a plain fence or what, but it is taller. Than the typical six.
Trees well. Do you wanna pull up the two that we received?
All right, I kept going to it and then, going away, my bad. They say the exact same thing, but they are from two different people.
Believe there may be your neighbor, um, because they're on Dixon Street as well.
They came from two different addresses.
Yeah.
That's where you're in that.
So they live at six, seven seventy-one Dixon, uh, regarding the public notification. Um, they, uh, can't be here this evening due to travel, um, but, uh, the residential buildings of seven and nine are specified and the proposed plan plans have multiple levels, um, balcony windows, whatnot, uh, facing their, their backyard, uh, greatly impacts the privacy. Um, object to the, the, uh, entrance doors, windows, balconies facing the backyard. Um, and please try to avoid it.
Okay, there we go. And here's the other one.
Again, from the resident at seven fifty-one Dixon, uh, regarding this public hearing, uh, again, can't be here due to travel. Um, same thing, the residential building six, seven, and nine, uh, in the proposed plan have multiple levels. Balcony window placed facing their backyard, uh, greatly impacts the privacy. Then, uh, they object, um, and ask for us to address it or, or talk about it in, in the meeting of the two letters that we received. And I think there's a couple of things in regards to that. Um, I think, you know, with the developers here, um, let's see what that looks like. Is there anything that we can do from a landscape type perspective, uh, to Joey's point, there's an eight-foot fence versus, um, a normal six-foot. So, you know, things that we can do to possibly, um, assist in that, um. Do you have any thoughts on that, Chris, or not?
I think that we've kind of taken that into consideration already. As you mentioned, we've got trees through there. There's that ten-foot buffer, then you've got a parking lot. So I know that we have a view of it, but I've got a thing standing in one of those backyards. We're getting looking up. Probably not see those, those balconies. Just because.
The total of fifty or sixty feet?
Yeah, so total, I think it's also eighty-five from the property line. It's, it's dimension on that plan. Under, so the closest spot is eighty-five from each of that.
That's actually the corner of that building. And the short sides of those buildings, they don't have any entrances or balconies on them. They have a window. That's normally a egress window, but a bedroom. You know, and anybody like me, they keep their bedroom closed. We do turn five away. Is where those lots are starting to curve away from us, too. And with nine, if you go down on the, um, the aerial there, that the lot start to turn away from us again. So there's an open space up underneath that easement. So nine does face that direction, but there's a considerable distance between us.
Landscaping that you put on there, is that close to how you guys see it?
That's what we intend to do is to put both overs. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, canopy trees and under story trees. Yeah, we cut back the under story. Because we wanted to show the trail. But, um, we intend to heavily landscape that area both. Where canopy trees, under story trees. So you kind of get a three-dimensional break in the visualization through there.
And I, I think the specific tree selection is gonna have a lot to do with it, too.
Focus on horse evergreen.
Yeah.
And, um, because it will mature to height that.
So have you approached planting in the easement? Because a lot of times they don't do that.
Yeah, and we're gonna, we're gonna have to do that. I think that's part of that next step. And I was thinking through that here a second, so.
But once again, their power lines are.
Well, I, I understand.
Yeah. They likely have some restrictions that is there. And again, I think that's just that, that next level of detail that we've gone through and just make sure that's.
I'm gonna have some concerns on that because if they come back and obviously their first response is probably gonna be absolutely not.
Yeah.
You'll have to work from there, but then, you know, likely what you'll see is they want some smaller type trees in there, so.
And that's what I'm wondering, maybe if they're just shrubs that are all, I mean.
They have those green giants, right? And they technically not a tree, but they get very tall.
So I, I think there's probably some things that we can work with them.
With that, the poles being south, will they care most of what the poles are closer? They might not. I mean, yeah, and I did want to clarify with you. So four are four. The max height we allow typically is the, uh, forty-five feet, three stories. Now, these were the only two four-stories we've seen.
No, the original P U D.
Had a four-story.
Four-story also.
That's what I'm saying. It's the only approved four-story in the city, but it was four-story with four. And those ones are the ones that are all the way at the front of this one. So I mean, three would have been allowed for our four.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna ask that.
So these back ones are three?
Yeah.
Yeah, the only fours are the ones in the very corner and the one next to it?
Yeah, the two on the corner.
To your point, you're saying by right.
Anybody who goes on four.
Just that.
Three-story forty-five wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah.
And that's.
We do understand their privacy concerns as well, so.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Going back to the entrance and exit on Womack. Uh, what is the distance between that entrance and exit on Womack to one oh two? What I'm thinking about is like Greenhouse Road.
Two hundred and eighty feet.
So like, so from one oh two, let's take Greenhouse Road for a second, just because that's where I can picture it. From one oh two to the exit out of the Watercolor Apartments to the backside of Taco Bell and all that. Is that, is this distance less than that? Because they're.
Significantly greater. It's more, and you also don't have, I don't believe, what's adjacent to it? It's, this is larger. And across the street to the east, you don't have all the drive cuts with the other people trying to come in and out and everybody go across each other. Um, is that the storage units right next?
Yeah.
Okay. I think they've got a driveway somewhere. Obviously not in traffic load, like you're talking.
Star, yes. Starbucks in the morgue is the real.
Entrance is my entrance only. To the storage, to the east.
Oh, it's not public?
Awesome. So the only entrance is at that south property line?
But again, it's not a Starbucks either at nine o'clock in the morning.
When do you access your storage unit?
Do what?
You don't go to your storage unit at nine o'clock?
Two AM.
Me at two AM. All right. So now I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Joey, a second.
A motion in a second. Is anyone opposed? Okay, we're now closed. Any additional questions, comments from any of the commissioners?
No, I, I think the privacy obviously is a valid concern. Um, but it sounds like there's some steps to mitigate that. And again, these buildings that are further south are no taller than anybody could build by right. And they're, they're offering additional distance away that would probably stop to be there because of the but on top of that, there's, they're trying to mitigate that with the increased landscaping. So, I, I think the picture is pretty. I think what it's really gonna come down to is what we get with the large scale when it comes in.
And it will fall under our screening requirements anyway.
Right. And they might be going above that, you know, they.
Look, this, I think they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they will be back. There's a large-scale development process after this. Um, all of our agendas are published publicly, so whether it's, it's yourself or it's the other neighbors, there's additional steps in this. This is the last time that we see this. So these guys will be back. Um, they'll have a more detailed plan. Um, as we go through the, what we call the large-scale development plan. So the things that are, that we ask tonight, that we bring up, those will be a part of our regional discussions that we do have. If there's no additional questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion.
I got one question. I'm sorry. We're looking at the renderings here from staff's opinion, um. What are the thoughts on the material selection?
They need our architectural requirements.
Assuming there's some articulation on that.
Yeah, there has to be done there as far as the, the P U D.
It's hard to tell because it's flat, so.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I would entertain a motion for P U D twenty-three zero five, the Womack mixed use.
This is telling me to make most of thirty P B twenty-three dash zero five.
John, a second. Motion in a second. Uh, Matt, if you'd be able to roll call for me, please.
It's Voda.
Yes.
Tony Davis.
Yes.
Ben Lewis.
Yes.
John Sessons.
Yes.
Jerry Harris.
Yes.
Fred Gwynnford. Devin Murphy.
Yes.
Joey Ingle.
Yes.
Jeff Safer.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you all.
Hope your voice gets better.
They did.
Maybe you won't have to yell at Chris so much next time.
Right. Next on the agenda this evening is development twenty-three thirteen Chipotle, uh, preliminary plans at seventeen zero one East Centerton Boulevard. Uh, it is zoned C two. Uh, it is one point one six acres and the owner is S D J Acquisitions. Is the applicant here to give us an overview? Did y'all get your samples? Missed the samples tonight.
Yeah, you were late. Sorry, Al.
Oh, I see how it is.
Six, we gotta have, we gotta have, we gotta have Rita Bowes.
It's the, sorry, I digress.
Yeah, we're just building a Chipotle restaurant.
Your name and who are you with?
Uh, my name is Victor. I'm the captain. Victor, that's it.
All right. Haley, you want to give a staff overview?
Yes. Okay, so this parcel is located on Centerton Boulevard between the Popeyes Chicken to the east and White Castle Rentals to the west. To the south is the Watercolors Apartment, and then across the street to the north is the K F C Schlatchby's Andy's Combo, which, um, is technically within the city limits. Um, this project proposes a two thousand three hundred and twenty-seven square foot building with a digital order line. Water is available along Centerton Boulevard. The sanitary sewer for this development will next to, and I'll correct if I'm wrong, the Watercolors Apartment to the south already has all required utility easements dedicated. Um, they're, they decided to connect sanitary sewer through Watercolors, right?
With Watercolor Colors was built, the sanitary sewer, uh, yeah, it goes through there and runs around the south of their property. So they'll connect down to the south. Through the sanitary easement and water will connect off water to.
There was some, there was a debacle about that.
They changed where it was originally, so they don't.
Yes, um. The drainage for this development will tie into the Watercolors Apartments using trickle channels. And a drainage easement already exists along the view of the property. The drainage report has been approved by the city engineer with the recommendation to review the ponding depth and spread in the parking lot to ensure pedestrians will not have to walk through water to access the building. Um, the adjacent street agreement right-of-way dedication isn't required because this part of one or two has already been tied in, so no additional right-of-ways needed. Um, the project will provide street trees outside of the R dot right-of-way, streetlights, and, um, a sidewalk connection from one or two, all the way through the site to the Watercolors Apartment, existing sidewalk to the south. Staff recommends approval of the adjacent street agreement. Uh, a stubout is provided to the west will allow for future connection for what is currently White Castle Rentals. The project is proposed. Um, along the already existing access drive for Popeyes. Um, will be sharing the existing thirty-six-foot back of curve entrance off of Centerton Boulevard, so they're not doing any additional changes to the existing entrance or the access drive. They're just doing curb cuts for their entrances. Um, for the parking, for our code, this development is required to provide one parking space per two hundred square foot of building space would, would require twelve parking spaces, and they are proposing thirty-one parking spaces, which is twenty-nine regular and two ADA, so they definitely meet the requirement. For the lighting, streetlights are provided at the entrances and within the development to provide adequate. We recommend approval of the lighting plan contingent on adding one additional street light um, in the center of that access. The green space on the access drive, there's not one there in the photometric plan, so but it was pretty dark down there. Um, for the landscaping, uh, landscaping is provided within the open spaces throughout the development, including landscaping around the dumpster and parking lot islands and along the side of the one oh two and within the island along the access drive. We recommend approval of the landscaping plan contingent on the remaining comment from Centerton Utilities regarding the Schumard oak trees near the waterline along Centerton Boulevard. Um, they want them to take a tree that doesn't have such a strong root system because of the waterline. Um, there are some remaining comments left. Uh, the city engineer has a remaining comment regarding the grading for the sidewalk on the south side of the project. And he said that that can be addressed before construction. And then Centerton Utilities has that one comment with the trees and then also a comment regarding the grease trap location. And then, um, there was a few labeling comments that he had left, but other than that, um, we recommend approval contingent on remaining staff comments. Such means comments and concerns.
Our favorite dumpster enclosure, is it gonna be, um, is it gonna be good?
It needs to go a little bit.
Yeah.
Are the doors gonna be wood? Are they gonna be something different? I didn't see that on there.
You know, the doors have the dumpster enclosure, are they metal gates with slats or are they?
Typically, they're wood.
Wood.
Any other questions or comments from any of the commissioners?
I mean, did we want to ask for different details?
Can we, can we ask you guys to look at doing a different structure versus wood on the, on the doors? Because typically they last about six months. And then they, they look bad and then people see dumpsters. Can we request you all do something?
We can present it to the owner.
And we'll look at changing that in our code, too, since it looks like it's.
If there's no additional questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion for development twenty-three thirteen Chipotle at seventeen zero one East Centerton Boulevard.
John, a motion to approve development twenty-three thirteen.
Motion in a second. It is, anyone opposed? Thank you, guys. Good luck. Brian will be able to walk to that one.
He already made his work. What, it's sort of a man.
Right. Lorraine, you want to give us a quick update on the land use, planning discussion?
We staff met last Wednesday on land use plan. And we also had the master street plan and ended up finding that it wanted to look at what changes we needed to make to the master street plan first. And then take our current zoning maps and see what we have and then work on an updated landings. So.
Put your industrial locations off of your imperial.
So we are working on it. Uh, Eric, we've got, uh, some changes made to the map, to master street plan map that uh, we had asked, so we'll meet again. And I just want to let you know that we are working on it. Um, so we'll set up another meeting and.
So the plans for y'all to kind of nail it down, what you think, and then start the public and, uh, I guess council and planning?
We're gonna, we'll work on it. Um, then we'll, yes, come bring it to the commission. And probably have a work session, I think is the easiest way to do. And so that you can all, you know, be a little more informal, lay it out. Where you guys can look at it and make notes, make recommendations.
And if there's, if you guys have thoughts, questions, comments, anything like that, and you have some time to stop by, or you want to pick up the phone, feel free to do that. Just understand that we, we can't all go gather there together um, as a commission and, and have meeting and discussion unless we publish that we're going to be there as a, as a group. Publish that we're going to be there as a, as a group, so.
If you know of any areas that you think need to be changed, then let us know. You know, so we can.
So is the intent to adopt the master lane use, uh, master street plan? Long at the same time as the lane use plan, all simultaneously together? Okay.
Yes. Makes usually easier to go ahead and update everything at one time.
Well, bendy.
Uh, as far as the develop, the Title fifteen draft revision, I was supposed to receive one on Monday. For, uh, staff, or just to draft, the final draft. Well, for staff to review. But we did not receive it. Uh, there were some. So.
Something.
I get with Garber. And then I dragged Joey, I had wanted to look at that and dragged Joey in. Along with staff and start. Working out, fine tuning it. Okay, so.
Years of asking, or how, ten years, how long?
As long as Joey's there, none of you can be there. Sorry.
Gotcha. I got it.
Before you all get it, it's a whole lot easier it is to work with. A document.
What she means is, if I'm not asking questions about it, we can all get done a lot quicker.
Right.
Okay, we did Jake's part.
All right, uh, there's a council meeting on the thirteenth. Our next, uh, planning commission meeting is the twentieth. If you can't be here, just let us know.
I got one thing, can I add to the land use and master street plan? Um, anytime we meet, I think it'd be advantageous to have council there too. So it doesn't feel like it's an afterthought for them, and they can have info run in, have some bottom in for everybody. And then, to me, that seems like it would go smoother as we, uh, get across the finish line.
That's what she was saying, that once we have some where we're at, to have a work session for a full review. Cause there, every council department, that's all at once.
Anything else from any of the commissioners? You can ask if they want any. Did y'all just come to listen tonight, or? Perfect. Thanks for coming. Um, if not, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Anybody opposed? Thank you, guys.